I'll wait for Erickson to be seated. Good evening, and welcome to the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, December 9th, 2015. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Commissioner Kane?
Yeah.
Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
And Vice Chair Badami?
Here.
Would everyone please stand and join Commissioner Talisfor as she leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos encourages public participation with written and verbal comments. Members of the public may speak on any item on the agenda when it is heard, or on any matter not on the agenda, under verbal communications. To speak on an item, please fill out a speaker card located within the benches, and follow the instructions on the back of the card, and be sure to turn the card into staff. We have a desk item. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to read the correspondence?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Items number two, three, four, and five are requested to be continued till late February, pending council consideration on view analysis. Do we have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Kane. We have a second. Commissioner Talisfor?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Erickson?
So I have a question with the tolerance of the Vice Chair. Of the staff, is continuing it to February 24th late enough?
We don't know, but if we get to that point, then it may need to be continued again.
Sure, but anyway.
We have to continue to a date. We have to, we have to continue to a date certain, so we picked that date, and then if we come up to that date and we're still not done, then we'll...
Commissioner Hanson?
As a follow-on question, since we just met last week to go over the view analysis, which was the primary reason for the continuance, that is it, am I correct in assuming the next step is it goes to town council?
That's correct.
And is it scheduled for town council at this point?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Any further questions? In addition to their service on the commission, members also serve on, I'm sorry, we did have a motion with a second, so I'm going to call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you. In addition to their service on the commission, members also serve on various subcommittees throughout the town. Are there any committee reports from commissioners? Commissioner O'Donnell?
This afternoon, you and I met with the rest of the committee of Conceptual Development Advisory Committee, and we considered two matters, as you and I know. It's purely an advisory committee. We don't make decisions, but the applicants come in seeking some advice. So we did two matters. One was 16,100 Green Ridge Terrace, which is the property adjacent to the Highlands, and it's 36 acres, if memory serves me correct. And they are proposing to divide it into eight lots. So we discussed that. It is, as you all know, in the hills, very sensitive land, lots of good trees up there, questions as to views and that kind of thing. So we had a very good discussion with that, and I'm sure we will see the applicant at some time in the future. The second matter we considered was on the same street as the matter we're considering this evening, Camino del Cerro, but of course at a different address, 15,565. On that particular piece of property, the applicant is proposing to build four homes, four lots. So we discussed with the applicant whether the lot would truly support four, as opposed to perhaps three, and other discussions we had with them. I thought it was a good discussion with the applicant, and they have not yet even decided whether they're going, they're the, they don't own the property, but they would be the developer if they decide to go forward. So we don't know yet whether, after talking to us, they will decide to go forward, although very frankly, they were received somewhat warmly. So that's what we did this afternoon.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. We are moving on to our verbal communications, but I have no speaker cards up here. Anybody in the audience want to talk to us tonight?
No verbal communication.
What's that?
Matters now. We talked about that? Forgot to say, I thought you said that. Did you say that, Mr. Jean?
I see, yeah, we're on verbal communications.
Those are all, those are all ones number six.
Okay.
You're good.
Okay. We also have a report from Commissioner Talisfor that she'd like to share with us tonight.
Right, and that's for the planned, Planned Development Study Committee, met last week, and has actually come up with a draft. We haven't seen it yet, but we had a very vigorous discussion about it, and we have narrowed it down to what we think will be our final. And in next week, we'll be covering conditional use permits, as far as residential, what can I say, residential areas, yeah, in housing. And so that's what we're doing.
And do you want to add anything to that, Charles or Melanie, or both on the committee? Thank you.
You were perfect.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Talisfor. We are moving over to our consent calendar, and we have approval of the minutes, so I am going to look to the commissioners if there is a motion or if there is discussion.
No minutes.
I see that there are no minutes, so we will pass on that. Passes you down, Mrs. Lee. All right, we are, we are moving to item number six, and that will be 15753 Camino del Cerro, Architecture and Site Application S-15-063, requesting approval to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct a new single-family residence on property owned R-1-8, APN 523-24-001. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Are there any disclosures from the commissioners? Commissioner Kane?
I have a comment on visitation. It was kind of staff to give us the combination to the fence, but the beware of vicious, ferocious dog sign discouraged me from using that combination, so I wouldn't get eaten alive. If I want to make a trip out there, somebody could take, oh, shoot the dog or take down the sign. It's discouraging. So I walked around it. I walked through the repidium corridors, hung on to the cyclone fence, and inched my way along, and it was a terrible thing. Did you all brave the vicious dog when you went out there? You did, Joey? I'm shocked.
You have to, you have to remember that since they're coming before us, probably wouldn't have been a good idea to have a vicious dog back there while we were looking at it. So I relied on that.
Would have been a better idea to take down the sign.
I took some doggy snacks with me.
Thank you all for your input. All right, Ms. Mosley, I understand to be providing the presentation this evening.
I will, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. The subject site at 15735 Camino del Cerro is accessed through, as you mentioned, a gated driveway located at the end of Camino del Cerro, which is just north of Ross Creek. Camino del Cerro does continue on south of Ross Creek, and on the way even continues down south of Blossom Hill Road. The site is a 24,500-square-foot flag lot, and is surrounded by lots that average in around 10,000 square feet, and have average home sizes of 2,500 square feet. The applicant is proposing a 4,428-square-foot residence and a 1,008-square-foot garage. The residence would be approximately 24 feet in height. Staff has forwarded the application to the commission based on the size of the proposed residence in relation to the immediate neighborhood and area. The applicant has made several changes in order to address the concerns of the consulting architect and arborist, and those changes are included in the final development plans, which are included as Exhibit 13 within your packet. While the application would create a significantly larger home than those in the immediate neighborhood, it should be noted that the site does not have a street presence. It can be viewed from across the creek on Sierra Moreno, and from the rear yards of the immediately adjacent properties, but will not have a direct impact on an established street, excuse me, streetscape. While the residents would conform to the required height and FAR for the property, the site is, this, excuse me, staff is still concerned that the proposed residence is too large for the neighborhood, and as such, we recommend denial of the project or a continuance with direction to reduce the size of the residence. This completes staff's report. We are here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Are there questions from commissioners? Commissioner Talisfor?
Yes, there was mention of a cabana, and is that included in the site plans at all?
So the cabana is located at the rear, next to the proposed pool, and is open on, I believe, two or three sides, so it doesn't count towards floor area.
So that's why we don't have elevations of it in there?
There are elevations included in your, in your pocket.
Oh, good. Maybe I could, someone tell me where that was, I can take a peek at it.
Let me find a page for you.
Page A7. A7.
A7, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
I have, I have two questions. My first question is about the, the architecture consultant's report. He reviewed it a couple of times, and, and then there was a, in the second review, there was two things that he flagged as needing attention. And my interpretation of staff's comments was that the applicant had addressed both of his concerns, but I looked at the pictures and, you know, before and after, and I didn't, and since he didn't respond after that, I didn't really know. So that was question number one. Do you want me to stop there and then ask the second one?
Sure, let me get to the right page in the report for a second. So the information I included in the staff report was verbatim from an email that I received from Larry Cannon, our consulting architect, in regards to the gable end. So the applicant had proposed a kind of a quasi-solution to what the initial consulting architect's report was, and the consulting architect wasn't satisfied with that. Gave them this direction, and the applicant did include that in their revisions. And then the last thing, the second item that he spoke on was the skylight structure, which was something that staff struggled with, and was a little surprised when he didn't comment on it initially. And so we did follow up with the applicant after this email, and the applicant chose to remove the skylight entirely and just do a flat skylight, which we believed addressed the consulting architect's concerns.
Okay, so, so when I was looking at your comments on page six, it says, based on the direction from the consulting architect, the applicant made changes to simplify the massing of the roof, which I assume satisfied condition one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the second thing was the flat skylight, which satisfied condition two. Okay. So that was my first question. My second question was about the arborist's report. I noticed that Ms. Ellis had reviewed the first two drafts of the applicant's arborist's report and made comments, but then there was a final report dated October 1st, and then there was no other comments from Ms. Ellis. So was an attempt made to have her review that, or?
So staff reviewed the, the responding report and didn't find it necessary to send that back to them, and that is pretty common. The, Debbie only actually did two reports because she didn't have all the information when she did the initial report, so that's why you see two reports. It wasn't that she saw revisions and recommented on them. There was missing information that she then received after she had completed her first report.
So in, so staff's opinion is that, because she flagged, number one, that the report wasn't in compliance with the new tree ordinance. So the revised report dated October 1st, in staff's opinion, is in compliance with the tree ordinance, and that all the errors that she flagged in terms of the sizes of the trees, and, and, you know, there was even a tree, I think, that was not there, or something like that, you concurred with the, their October 1st report?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Talisfor?
About that, the roof, can we coordinate the roof, Larry Cannon's recommendation, and the elevations that, that he reviewed and the result of it? Can we, again, tell me? I'm looking at A3.4.
On which exhibit?
Of the... Exhibit 13.
Okay. 3.4 is what you said?
A3.
A3. Okay.
And if you look at Larry Cannon's report, which is Exhibit 11, page 5, he, he made his recommendation on page 5, do you see that, number 2?
Yes.
Where he said to use the hip roof to match other roof forms, so that the roof then becomes balanced?
So the applicant...
So what I'm seeing here is not that.
Correct. So the applicant, as a response to this, like I said...
As a response to?
As a response to this comment within...
Larry Cannon's comment, okay.
Larry's report from September 9th. They did a, they couldn't hip that entire section because it impacted the way that they had designed the interior space and the ceilings and, and the ridges inside the room. And so the applicant came back with a, instead of a full hip, a, I forget what he called it. What was that? A Boston gable.
Is that what I'm seeing on page A3?
And that's what you see on Exhibit 12. A3 of Exhibit 12 was their resubmital, which Larry Cannon reviewed.
This is the one I'm looking at.
So if you look at Exhibit 12, you'll see the elevations that Larry Cannon reviewed and commented on in his second review.
I just wanted to be sure of that.
Yeah, so this is the new, it's the revision.
Yeah, right here.
Exhibit 12, I have Exhibit 12.
Hang on. Let me get to Exhibit 12.
Would it help to put it on the projector?
Well, that would, that would help, but that's right.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Let me hand it to you.
No, I have it right here.
Okay, that's right. Thank you.
So that's what the resolve was. So that's what the applicant proposed, and Larry Cannon reviewed and commented in response to that, that rather than do, do that solution, he preferred returning it back to the gable end and doing a coordinating gable end on the other side, which is what you have in your Exhibit 13 elevations.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. That was not easy to, to see. That's all for now.
Any other questions from commissioners? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mosley. We will now open the public portion of the hearing and allow the applicant 10 minutes to address the commission. I believe that'll be Mr. Jean stepping up to the podium. Okay. Mr. Jean, that 10 minutes will also include the applicants, if they are here.
They were not expecting this to be on quite as early. They thought there were four items before, so they will not be here.
Thank you.
Tony Jean's commissioners, I'm going to start with a little picture of the neighborhood. And as you can see, in this instance, we have a 2/3 of an acre parcel, surrounded by about 16 neighbors, and also Ross Creek. So the immediate neighborhood is much more diverse than usual. I think there are about 16 or so neighbors. I didn't count them, but we have communicated with each of them, and some of them are here. The majority of them, I think everyone really liked the house. There was, there were a few concerns on trees and suchlike, but we'll hear from them shortly. This is the analysis in the staff report. I thought I'd put it up there because there are a couple of interesting things. The left-hand column is the column of house sizes, and the corresponding lot size is here, and the FAR is here. So you're looking at three very useful pieces of information of a comparative nature. The number that you can't really see is about 4,400 on 24,000, 24,500-foot lot. Now, the lot is actually significantly bigger than that. It's nearly 29,000, but we subtracted the portion that you see as the very long flag, because that does not really count towards contributing to the lot. So we reduced the 29,000 down to 24,500, and all of our FAR ratios and everything are based on the smaller lot size. So if you go back to this here, you can see that on Elgato Lane, you have a number of smaller houses. On Sierra Marina Court, you have some larger houses, that's across the street, and on Escobar behind, you have some medium-sized houses there. So the largest house in the, in the immediate neighborhood would be considered 3,300. There are several in the 3,000, and, and then some smaller ones behind. So that is the neighborhood. But do look at the lot sizes, because this is where everything really should be viewed. These are 8,000 to 10,000-foot lots typically, and we're dealing with 24,500 as the lot size that we have to develop for our client. The FAR, as you can see, .18 is based on the smaller lot size. It's .15 if you take the whole lot, and it compares with 20, up to 37% when you look at some of the other homes in the area. Because the guidelines try and ask you to look at how it compares with the neighborhood, I'd like to analyze this a little differently. So I split this immediate neighborhood into areas of equal size. These three houses, these three houses, these three houses, these three houses, and these three houses. It so happens, they're, they're all within a couple of thousand feet of the size of this property here. We're looking at putting 4,400, 4,400 square feet on this property. On this area here, an equal area, you've got 8,000 square feet of house. On this area here, you've got about the same as we have proposed. On the area at the bottom, across the street, you've got another 8,000 square feet on the same-sized area. Again, down here, 27,000 square feet, you've got another 8,000 square feet of home. And on the 29,000 feet up here, you've got another 8100 feet of house. So if you're looking at scale or the intensity, the development intensity of that neighborhood, we're putting 4,000 square feet of house on an area where all the immediate neighborhood is showing about 8,000 square feet. You've already asked some questions about the, the roof, but I wanted to put this up here, because this is the little matching gable that we put to match the gable on the other end, so that it was balanced. I think the architect felt that it was unbalanced because we had a gable at one end and nothing anywhere else. We did that because it couldn't be seen from anywhere, so we didn't feel it was important, but he felt from architectural integrity, it should be balanced. So we balanced it with a matching gable. We removed the very large, tall skylight and put on a flat skylight. We hipped all the roofs to make everything low in mass and bulk, and to give a very low profile to the house. I don't believe that any of the immediate neighbors are concerned about the height or mass of the house. We also articulated it quite considerably, so that this is the view from across Ross Creek that they would have if they were looking through a whole series of trees that are here, but if they could see through the trees, that's the view that they would have. And I think it is a very well-articulated, very pleasing, very scaled design. So I thought we'd try a scorecard. So this is the Design Guidelines Scorecard. The house size, it's the largest house by 1,100 square feet. The neighboring homes range up to 33, so we get a zero on that one. The lot size, the lot is two to three times the size of neighboring lots. This puts the house size in context, so I think we're okay there. The FAR, this home at 18% has a very low FAR. Neighboring homes range up to double that, so I think we get a passing grade on that one. Mass, it's a low-profile, single-story home. Most of the neighbors, except the ones immediately behind, have two-story, relatively boxy houses based on the architecture when they were built in the 70s and 90s. So in terms of mass, we think we are less massive. Because of the articulation that I showed you with the hip roof, we think it reduces the bulk, and I think we pass on that one as well. The analysis that I just showed you of the immediate neighborhood shows you that in terms of scale, in that neighborhood, we've got 4,000 square feet on 2/3 of an acre, as opposed to very commonly 8,000 square feet. So if you average the score, you get 5 out of 6, which is 83%, which is well beyond a passing grade, and we hope you approve it. I'm available to answer questions. I also want to let you know that I've looked at the outlying neighborhood, and I do not believe that there would be any precedent created by this property, because there are no large properties that are akin to this, so I don't think you need to worry about a precedent being created by a large house. Once again, a very small FAR and a larger house, but not large for the neighborhood and one that cannot be seen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jean. Are there questions for Mr. Jean's from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Kane?
Mr. Jean, would you put the diagram back up showing the flagstaff aspect of the property?
This one?
Yeah, now with your finger, indicate approximately how much of that driveway was cut off in the calculation?
About to here, all of that portion. When it started expanding out, we counted that as the, as the lot. So we took out 20 times 187 feet, something like that.
Was that a required omission in any sense of...
No, I, I did that, but staff concurred that that was a good thing to do.
A good thing or required thing?
It was not required. It might have been required, had I not chosen to do it, but in the, in my original application, I took that off, because I thought it was appropriate to do so.
Okay. Moving to the arborist's report, I, first I read the arborist's report that you provided, and I thought, well, that, that was pretty well done. That was my honest first reaction to it. And then I read Ms. Ellis's report, and as a friend of mine used to say, I was quite taken aback. She has about nine, 10 discrepancies that she calls significant, and one of... She has about nine, 10 discrepancies that she calls significant, and a number of them concern tree canopies, and the extent of the tree canopy determines how many replacement trees need to be put in, so it's important. And one was listed as 12 feet. She points out it's 25, 15 versus 25, 12 versus 18. Tree trunk was offered in the report as six inches. She said it's closer to 13, and there were two or three other canopy miscalculations, which again affects the number of trees that are required to be put in. But were you comfortable with this report? It seems to be quite misleading.
Yes, I can tell you what happened. One tree was missed in the original report, and when Debbie Ellis went down, she was one tree out on every subsequent analysis that she was looking at, and consequently there are about 10 trees that were... She was talking about one tree?
She was off by one number?
Was one tree, yeah.
Who skipped it? Ms. Ellis or your person? In any event, it wouldn't matter.
I don't remember, but the bottom line...
She was off by one tree. Let me check with staff. Mr. Paulson? Is that accurate? Was Ms. Ellis off by one tree and all of these discrepancies came from that?
I would have to look to Ms. Mosley for that information.
It was subsequently corrected, and it so happened that all the tree sizes and canopies fell into line when that tree was put back in, and that resolved most of the issues in Ms. Ellis's...
So for that one tree, all of her... These kind of significant discrepancies were all ameliorated or corrected just for that one tree?
Yes. Now, there may have been a couple of canopies that were changed. They were all corrected, and Deborah Ellis and the Arborists are in agreement that the final report is correct and the tree counts are correct and the canopies are correct, but I think it stemmed from the fact that in trying to get Deborah Ellis to go out fairly early, the tree numbers had not been tagged, and I believe that's what happened, and so everything was one-off. It might not have been exactly what happened, but it was a confusion based on the fact that I think Debbie Ellis did not have a full set of information to go from.
With respect to those trees, the driveway trees, they send letters back and forth, revised reports, and I don't know what their bottom line was. On those driveway trees, what are you going to do to address Ms. Ellis's concerns about the impact to those trees of any kind of construction? She suggests moving the driveway over or decreasing its width. Are either of those two things going to be done?
We are not grading for the driveway. We're putting... So we are not affecting the root system. What we're doing is we're putting the driveway on top of the existing grade.
I was thinking she was saying that that may not work.
She didn't comment on that.
And again, she was asking to move it over or make it less wide. So we're not going to move it over. We're not going to make it less wide. We're doing something that should not impact the trees.
Correct. And the project Arborist will have the responsibility of making sure that that impact does not happen, and he will be retained during the course of construction and give reports to staff at appropriate times. That's the normal process.
If you may allow me to jump in just real quickly, your tree arborist, which is Monarch Consulting Arborist, is that the arborist that you chose to do the report?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm looking at Exhibit Nine, and that would be Page 10, and your own arborist is making the recommendation that you move the driveway to the northeast to avoid the trees or use biaxial geriade, I'm not sure of the pronunciation, on native soil for support on existing grade. So are you ignoring the advice and recommendations of your own arborist?
No, we're supporting it on existing grade. The latter is what we're doing.
Okay, but are you moving... Okay, but you're still not going to move the driveway?
He says go one way or the other. We went the other. We're supporting it on existing grade, and we're not grading into the existing grade.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from commissioners?
No, thank you, Mr. Jeans.
Commissioner Hanson.
I appreciated all the analysis that you did about the neighborhood, but the fact is that our residential design guidelines are very, very clear that to, you know, to build a house that's significantly bigger than the other houses in the neighborhood is not what we want to do in Los Catos. Having said that, I read your letter of justification. I wondered, is there some... Is there any square footage that would be less than 4,400 square feet in the house that could get the applicants their five bedrooms plus their office? And then secondly, I noted that the garage is by far and away also the largest, and it looked like additional living kind of spaces, like the utility room, had been put in there, and I wondered if there wasn't some way to bring down the size of the garage as well, because when you compare this to everything else in the neighborhood, and especially given what we heard earlier today in terms of the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee, they're talking about subdividing lots into smaller pieces, this neighborhood's not moving in a direction of bigger houses, and this would be by far and away, even if you can't see it, the biggest house in the neighborhood and garage. So I wanted to know, is there any room from your perspective to build somewhat of a smaller house, still get them in their five bedrooms, and is there a possibility of bringing down the size of the garage?
The utility room is part of the house FAR. It's not part of the garage. It might be on the plan of the same sheet as the garage, but the utility room is part of the FAR of the house, okay? There is always a way to make minor changes and reduce it a little. It is pretty much a really huge lot, and it... In that neighborhood where it cannot be seen and it appears to be supported by the majority of neighbors, and it isn't creating a precedent because there aren't a substantial number of similar-sized lots where something like this could happen. It's not impacting the streetscape in any way, shape, or form. I think that a slightly larger house, and it really only is slightly larger, is appropriate in that location because of the flaglot nature of the building, of the lot, the proximity of Ross Creek and the neighbors being well away on the other side. The other houses that are two-story are more massive in terms of context than this will be. So I think I would ask you to really look seriously about allowing something like this to be done. I think the garage, it could be reduced a little, but I don't know that that would have any impact on the neighborhood. Even reducing the house a little would have no impact on the neighborhood. So the fact that the neighbors have pretty much supported what we've done, the only emails that we've had apart from one relating to the eucalyptus have been in support. We don't have, you know, the 16 or so neighbors up in arms about what we're trying to do. They like what we're trying to do.
And I appreciate that you reached out to the neighbors. Here's my concern. I think when you look at the house that's there now, no one's lived in the house for a while. It's fairly dilapidated. The lot is rundown. And so if I were in the neighborhood and you had asked me, I would say, yeah, compared to what's there now, that looks so much better. But, you know, we don't expect the neighbors to look at the issue of massing and relative size in the neighborhood and everything. I mean, it isn't impacting their view and the fact that you're making it a one-story house, but it isn't just a little bit bigger than the other houses. It's 20 more or more percent bigger than the other houses.
I certainly understand that.
Than the biggest house, actually. And then it's probably double the size of most of the houses.
Okay. What... I think one of the things that you have to consider when you have a lot which is in essence a flaglot is if you can keep nine or neighbors that are immediately adjacent to the property happy in terms of what you've done in terms of massing and scale, the height and everything, and that they do not really see the house, they're not impacted by it. Because of the way we've kept it a very low profile, I think we've done a very good job in achieving what potentially could be very difficult on a flaglot. The reason we don't like flaglots in Los Catos is you normally have a lot of neighbors who are very, very impacted by something that you develop, and what we've developed here has no impact on the neighbors. So I think you really have to give it a lot of consideration based on that.
Did that answer your question? All right, thank you. Commissioner Kane?
Mr. Jeans, it's helpful that you had the wherewithal to approach the neighbors and that it's helpful to know that they're in support, that there's no hardship being voiced by any of them. As was pointed out, the place has been empty, it's dilapidated, and anything that goes over there that is new and well-designed will be appreciated, whether it's 50, 500 square feet or whether it's 3,000 like the rest of them. That the neighbors are happy with improvement to the property doesn't go to the law that we have to apply. And I was thinking as I was reading this, you know, the residential design guidelines really specifically say, "Development shall be similar in mass, bulk, and scale to the immediate neighborhood." Black and white, and I was vice chair when those words were written. My name's on the document. And if staff says... Staff can be rather flexible sometimes. Staff is not approving this either. They're recommending denial. So from your point of view, if I've got black and white, black and white, and my immediate concern is not the neighbors, it's the town. It's the town, and as you mentioned earlier, the P-word, precedent. I don't want to give away the law. So what were you thinking or what should I be thinking to allow this language to presently be ignored and also to disregard staff's recommendation for denial? And I have a PS on the garage. There's a little thing in here that discourages three-car garages, and when I drove the neighborhood, I didn't see any other three-car garages. So, you know, it's just really big in a neighborhood of 2, 3,000-square-foot houses.
Okay, so you brought up the fact that it has to be similar in mass, bulk, and scale. Also, existing FARs, square footage, and lot sizes in the neighborhood is how it's done in context. I really believe that the mass and bulk of this house is substantially less than most of the neighboring homes. I don't mean square footage.
How would you be defining mass and bulk?
I mean whether it is... Well, first of all, they're very objective. They're not... Sorry, they're very subjective. So it's when you stand and look at it, does it look big? Does it look as though it's towering? Does it look as though it's large for the lot? That is what mass and bulk is all about, in my estimation. And scale, I tried to look at that from the standpoint of the FARs and also with the diagram that I put up showing that in areas that are similar in size, 2/3 of an acre, 2/3 of an acre, 2/3 of an acre, et cetera, you had about 8,000 square foot of home, whereas on this 2/3 of an acre, you have 4,400. So in terms of scale of the neighborhood, what is development intensity, I don't see that being out of place. I do say and concede that it's the biggest square footage, absolutely. And that is why I put up the scorecard, which shows you where I think we lose out. We lose out on the fact that it is the largest house, but the mass, bulk, and scale, we are very appropriate because of that lot, and it's an unusual lot. If it were a small lot, there's no way we could do this. If it were right next to the street, I wouldn't want to do it. But it's tucked away, it's not visible, it doesn't give you any mass, it is not... No one walking by that is going to say, wow, look at the size of that house.
Oh, I will. Please. I've seen the designs, and I've walked the properties. I'm outside the cyclone fence so I didn't get eaten by the dog, but your scorecard is interesting.
That is not a massive house.
The paper behind your scorecard, that third column, is where I get stuck. This is 54, 5500 versus 3,000, 3,000, 1,000. Mr. Jeans, that's my problem. And applying the guidelines that we are entrusted to do, it looks like we've got something twice the size of anything else. I mean, I exaggerate to make the point. You call it a 4,000-square-foot house, I'm calling it a 55-square-foot because of the garage and everything else, but that's my... So just so that you know, that's my problem. It's twice the size of most of them, and I've got the language to defend and pass on so that we can maintain what we want to in terms of neighborhoods in this town.
I concede that it is bigger in square footage, but I do not believe that it is bigger in mass, bulk, scale, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Jeans. I'm going to look to Commissioner O'Donnell who has a question for staff.
I have a question for staff. Commissioner Kane read a guideline, as I recall, and would you, again, explain the difference between a guideline and a standard?
So the guidelines and standards are... Both of them are included. I know Commissioner Kane was speaking of the law, which generally refers to the zoning code, but the guidelines and standards are additional criteria that need to be met, and they're generally differentiated by shalls or shoulds, so that differentiates the guidelines from the standards.
My understanding, maybe I'm just wrong, whereas a statute or something like a statute is obligatory, a guideline is exactly what the name suggests. There is no law that says you can't say the guideline's great, but it doesn't apply here. Now, that's my understanding. I would address that to the town attorney and to you because I think it's a very significant matter to know the difference between a guideline and a standard. I think I've correctly stated it. Could you comment on that?
I was with you to that last sentence. The obligatory of a code section is absolutely the law that has to be complied with. A guideline is just that, it's a guideline that you can follow to provide you guidance in applying that standard. Where the language states shall, though, it should be applied even as a guideline. If the language is shall, we should... You should, as the body, apply that to your standard.
Commissioner O'Donnell, was that answered?
Well, just one last...
And if you could point me to the language you're actually looking at, that might help me.
Well, I think Mr. Kane...
It's residential development shall, and that's why I felt it was... You know, I'm not a lawyer, Tom, but...
Apparently, I'm not doing well as a lawyer, so it's okay.
Shall comply with...
Shall be similar in mass, bulk, and scale to the immediate neighborhood. The verb shall is what got my attention. I don't want to give that verb away.
And by the shall language, yes, you shall comply with mass, bulk, and scale, and that's where the subjectivity comes in, and that allows you to either approve or deny this project based on the discretion that's granted to this planning commission.
All I want to know, for example, we normally say the neighborhood are basically five homes. And I just... You know, if in fact this is cut and dried, we're wasting our time here. If on the other hand we have some discretion, for example, we believe there... Just as hypothetical, we believe that there are overriding considerations which would allow, for example, this house as opposed to this house on a different lot, then we have something to talk about. So I guess I'm really just asking, do we have discretion here to say, notwithstanding that it's bigger than any house... that it's bigger than any house in the neighborhood, almost any way you define that, we could approve it?
Yes, you have that discretion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the other commissioners have questions for Mr. Jeans? Commissioner Talisfor.
I do, and it's basically, I think we've gotten all the answers we need about compatibility. But I wanted to just go to a point that Mr. Cannon made when he was reviewing, and this is on page four of his staff report, and he recommended an approach to the stone usage on the building. And I noticed that on A3, in Exhibit 11 of the elevations, is this Exhibit 11?
Exhibit 11 is Larry Cannon's report?
No, Exhibit 13. Exhibit, okay, I know, there's a few things here. So if you refer to Exhibit 11 on page four, and it's concerning your final submittal, and that would be on A3, he has shown on page four and also on page five of his report that he, and I think with a very good reason, he had suggested that you organize the stone, it says here, to define the volumetric portions of the structure, and you did that, basically, except for two little portions in the back. And I wonder if you could ask, why wasn't that done? It was such, they're such small areas. Do you know what I'm referring to?
I thought that we addressed his stone issue. What he's wanted us to do is consolidate the areas of stone, instead of little areas, make them more contiguous. And on the back of the house, we do have an area that goes all the way through quite a sizable side. It's an L-shaped portion, so I don't know how many linear feet it is, but I would, I would guess that it's about 60 linear feet of stone.
Maybe you need to look at what I'm looking at. So you need, what?
Have it put it up.
Yeah, you could put this up.
On sheet?
Yes, so it's Larry Cannon's report, page four, and page five. Also, in Exhibit 13, the final elevation plans that you submitted, I'm seeing a little discrepancy, and he made a very big point of it. If you look on page four, at the bottom, you can't, I don't know if you can see it from here, commissioners, but on, in your reports, that L shape that comes way out, the top of the L, sort of toward the top of the page, you see the red line.
Are you concerned about this area here?
No, no, go to the bottom.
That one?
The bottom, the bottom illustration, the plan.
Right, this here?
Yes, go to the top of the L.
Up here?
Keep going, there, keep going, all right. Do you see how he has outlined where to add the stone?
Yes, I do.
I'm seeing that on page four, page five, but I'm not seeing it on your plans. I happen to think it was a very good suggestion to unify the use of the stone.
We would certainly do that if you felt that that was appropriate. We felt that if you look at the angled picture of the house, if we had stone all the way around here, and all the way up there, that was too much stone, it was unbalancing the front. So we went contiguous, we added it on this return here that you actually can't see on that, we added it down there, and then all the way along here on the front portion. But if you would like it along here, I'm sure that the owner would feel comfortable doing that. I was on the fence that way.
Well, Larry had a, Larry had a very good reason for doing it, so this commissioner would appreciate that.
Okay, I'm, I'm all right with that. And just, I can give you those back. Just reiterating one point that came up earlier. What we felt was that the shall, we read that, shall be similar in mass, bulk, and scale. So we felt that we had achieved mass, bulk, and scale by doing a low-profile house, and then the consideration.
Mr. Jeans, I'm going to interrupt you here. We are now responding to questions from commissioners, and I believe Ms. Talisfor's, Commissioner Talisfor's question was answered.
Okay.
So, thank you. Any further questions? All right. I'm now going to invite comments from members of the public, and I'm going to call Sharon Goldau to the podium.
My name's Sharon Goldau. I'm at 15790 El Gato Lane, directly on the other side of the proposed site. My main concern to talk to you today is, are the trees. So I was happy to hear the council talk about the arborist's report, I read those reports as well. Mostly, my concern is the eucalyptus tree, that is a protected tree. It's quite large, has a very large canopy. When I look outside my patio, I see that tree, that's my skyline. And it's part of a grove of eucalyptus trees that go down Ross Creek. So there's a riparian environment there, that part of the shade is protecting fish, crawfish, things of that nature. So I'm just here as an advocate, not necessarily for that tree. I know that one of the arborists stated, I believe it was Ms. Ellis, stated the tree was problematic. I would love to hear her expand on why she thinks that tree is problematic, there was no explanation for that. The first, the monarch arborist, said the tree was of high influence. These are all new vocabulary words for me, but they're fun. And I see no structures going up in that area, I don't understand why it would be of high influence, which Ms. Ellis then said she wasn't sure either, but then changed her mind in her rebuttal report because of the grading going on. So I'm confused by all that. The eucalyptus tree is very much in the corner of the property, and it's sort of the very, very farthest point you can get from the construction going on. So I'd like that to be looked at. But if the eucalyptus tree does need to go, then I would like the council to make sure the ordinance is followed in terms of replacing the canopy. There's a black walnut that's also being removed. I'm concerned that the number of trees, replacement trees, are fruit trees and screen trees, which are not going to give the canopy that an 80-foot tree gives right now. There are three redwoods that Mr. Jeans and the owner have added on from my suggestion. I'd like to see more trees like that. I'd like to see more larger canopy trees.
You have 30 more seconds.
30 more seconds. I would like to say on the positive note, I'm glad the property is a single-story. I'm also glad to see that the council is concerned about the size of the house. I really wasn't that concerned about the size until I came here tonight and read the staff report. But yes, I agree, my house is 1,900 square feet, 4,400 square feet, that's out of line with the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Goldau. Don't run away, we have questions.
Questions, fantastic.
Commissioner Talisfor had her hands up first.
All right, you're addressing the eucalyptus tree that's in the back as providing canopy for not only the stream, but also your yard, and is that correct?
Correct.
And so you would, did you suggest having it replaced with redwoods?
Correct.
Now, you realize it'll be a different type canopy with a redwood.
Absolutely. But what I'm looking for would be the height and the natural beauty of redwoods, something that's close to my heart. I've planted five redwoods on my property alone.
Okay.
So yes, I thought redwoods was a good compromise on their part, because that's what I had suggested.
Okay.
And I wanted a non-deciduous tree, I wanted an evergreen, because the eucalyptus isn't evergreen.
Thank you. Commissioner Kane, did you have a question?
I just wanted to add that I had the same reaction to the report when she said it was troublesome or whatever, because up to that point, I was thinking, great tree, we should try to save it. Now, if Ms. Ellis doesn't want to save it and thinks it's problematic, eucalyptus trees make great firetraps, I don't know. But I don't know why else she would dismiss such a wonderful tree. But I share with you that, you know, if they had given us some education, it might have been useful. The riparian corridor reference that you made, you know that that's not there for the length of this property, yes?
I'm sorry, Ross Creek goes along the property its entire way on one side. So yes, I do believe that's a riparian environment with Ross Creek, there's lots of canopy over the creek for the wildlife and the fish and the crawdads that I see there that live there.
When the creek has a concrete bed, as it does in this case, from one end of the property to the other, it's not referred to as a riparian corridor anymore, because there would be different standards to apply if it did.
I'll have to disagree with that.
Oh, good.
That there is not a concrete barrier until midway through the property. So all along my property is rocks and, you know, riprap, no concrete channel, and then partway through, I would say at least, I don't know, 20 to 30 feet, then the concrete begins. So part of the property does, does not have a concrete.
I may have been misled, thank you.
Perhaps in your walking through the bushes there, you were distracted.
It was the dog.
And just so you know, there's no dog.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, you may sit down now, thank you.
Thank you.
I will now call Dave Hasgraw to the podium.
My name is Dave Hasgraw. I actually am neighbors with Sharon, 15780 El Gato Lane. We are actually directly behind the proposed structure that's going to go in. And the concern I have is also with the, with the eucalyptus tree being removed. It does provide shade, as Sharon mentioned, and a certain amount of privacy. We are in a two-story house right behind it, it is part of our view. At the same time, I will say, maybe I could define the problematic, we do have jacuzzi in the backyard, and the only thing that I see with eucalyptuses is they do have very heavy branches that tend to come down in storms, and so that would be my only concern with it, is in, if it was to be removed, to be, to have a similar-sized tree such as a redwood go up, I think from a human safety standpoint, being in the back, that would be the problematic side of a eucalyptus tree. But other than that, I think the design is an elegant design, and I may not be able to comment on it because it wasn't on my card, but in listening to Mr. Jeans' description, I will say, scale-wise, I think it's a rather large lot, and actually, an attractive home this size well matches the size of the lot.
Thank you. You have more time if you like. Otherwise, I will look to the commissioners to see if they have questions. Seeing none, you can sit down.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we will now give the applicant, Mr. Jeans, up to five minutes to add any further comments.
I'd like to address the eucalyptus first, I think. This is the picture of the tree, and the recommendations came out of the peer review and say, I agree with the recommendation to remove the blue gum eucalyptus. She didn't see how the construction impact was high, but in any case, it's a good time to remove the large and problematic tree. I thought that the town felt that the trees were undesirable, the eucalyptus. It's protected because it has a large trunk diameter. We did talk to the neighbors, and they suggested replacing it, if it were to be replaced, with redwoods. We have three redwoods in that corner as a grouping, shown on the plan, and they would be a condition, because they're shown as redwoods on the plan, in anything that is done there. I know that the owner is concerned about losing the branches that shear off eucalyptus trees, he has three young children, and that's going to be their play area, and it would be a big concern to him if you were to require that to be kept. However, if that were the only reason for you to deny the project, I'm sure he can have it severely cut to remove some of the bulk and some of the height there. I know that that goes against some of the neighbors' request to keep it, but I know that he would want to do that. So in terms of the tree, that, those are my comments. I will go back to follow one point, because I just really want to give you an opportunity, if I can find the right piece of paper. And it's getting back to shall and standards and guidelines. And the way I read this, it shall be, has to be, similar in mass, bulk, and scale. But consideration will be given to the existing FARs, square footages, and lot sizes. So the square footage is something that is a guideline, it's not a standard. Scale, bulk, and mass is something that I have to try and develop on this site to make sure that it's in keeping with the neighborhood. And I would like you to give that serious consideration in your review. I believe that the scorecard, which was a kind of a tongue-in-cheek analysis, shows you where I think we have met the shalls, and where we have not. We do have a larger house, but I believe that you have the latitude to approve it. It is also 300 or 400 square feet under the allowable FAR, we're not pushing the limit of the floor area ratio. So we could do a 47, 4800 square foot, or whatever it is. We haven't pushed the limit of the FAR. I did the design that I had to do in order to meet the needs of my clients. So hopefully, you'll take that into consideration in your deliberation. And if you have any other questions, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Jeans. Questions? Commissioner Talisfor?
Right, you mentioned play area for the children that are, that will occupy this house. What is, and it's going to be near the eucalyptus tree or in that, so that would be really close to the bank of that stream. I'm just curious, when you say play area, is that, is there a plan for that?
No, just an area to play, throw a football around, have fun, be a family.
All right, thank you.
They've got two parents and three children.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Jeans. We will now close the public portion of the hearing, and I will look to the commissioners to see if they have any questions, comments, or motions. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Let me say that I think the argument that 4,000 feet should be compared to 8,000 feet is a very novel argument that I don't think makes any sense. But never, you know, so I want to say I don't buy that argument, because it's supposed to be a house compared to a house, not an area. On the other hand, if there was ever a lot that is unique, this is a very unique lot. And when you look at that lot, if you built a 3,000-square-foot house on that lot back there, it would be dwarfed by the, by the property. So that's why I wanted the guideline versus standard to be explored. I believe that a larger house than we would normally make in a street-fronting property would apply here, and we would have no trouble doing it and doing it legally within the guideline. On the other hand, there's no question, it's a large house, and if people think that's too large and they want to reduce it, I certainly understand that. But I think if we do that, it shouldn't be because we think it's a mechanistic decision that you have to look at the other houses in the neighborhood, and you have to have a house which is no bigger than, for example, the biggest house in the neighborhood. We don't have to do that. And I think that was the answer we got. But you could still say, I think it's too big. And if that's what people do, you know, that's, that's fine. I just think we ought to do it within the confines of the guideline as opposed to the standard. When I first read this report, I was concerned, this is a really big And I thought, you know, this house would probably be okay here because it's a very unusual property. I like the fact that it's single-story. I noticed the houses immediately behind are two-story, and they're really pretty noticeable. Their bulk and mass is quite a bit more than this building, notwithstanding that this is a larger home. If the height, if this were reduced, let's say it was a two-story building, and it was 3,000 square feet, but it had a second story on it, it's bulk and mass, to me, would be much more objectionable than having a single-story, well-designed building on a very unique, large lot. So, I am, I hear people saying it's too big, and it very well may be. I personally could live with that house. I think if you took 200 square feet off it or 400 square feet off it or 200 square feet off it, the garage is big. I don't know why you need 1,000 square foot for the garage. But 200 feet or 400 feet or 500 feet is not going to basically change that house. And so, that being said, whatever everybody wants to do, I respect it, but I just thought that I would like to say that we get to make this decision without reference to any iron-clad thing. We get to use our discretion, and if in your discretion you think it's too big, go ahead.
Commissioner Kane?
I don't disagree, Commissioner O'Donnell. Would it be foolish of me to do so? But, you know, my trust is that I shall preserve the meaning of the verb "shall." And that's what, when we talk about discretion and gray, I always get nervous. It's an old labor negotiator. I don't want to change any verbs, any nouns, any anything. They'll come back to haunt me. But this is about 40% larger than the average, and that goes beyond my definition or comfort level with discretion. So, I'd need to see a reduction to feel that I was doing the right thing for the town by putting some discretion on the verb "shall." I can't do that for, if it's up to 40% over the average home in the neighborhood. Question for staff, is it is or is it ain't a riparian corridor?
So, I offered two things. One, I think I may have misrepresented when we spoke earlier, so there is a portion.
Had your way with me.
Correct. Yes. So, the other is that, you know, riparian corridor, eucalyptus, wouldn't be part of a riparian corridor. It may be nearer riparian corridor or creek and provide some of the same benefits. And also, Ms. Mosley can probably expand more. We actually had a biologist review this application to make sure that it complied with the guidelines and wouldn't be impacting the top of bank, which is the 15-foot minimum. But I'd look to Ms. Mosley to expand on that.
Does the 15 go to 20 if it's a bona fide riparian corridor?
Not necessarily, and there are certain things that you can do in there, and a biologist can determine what, you know, how suitable the actual riparian corridor is, but Ms. Mosley can probably speak better to that.
Let me correct that. The, a previous property owner contacted staff when they were looking at, or I don't even know if they actually purchased the property. They were looking at purchasing the property, and they were concerned about potential, the potential to do additions on the site. I told them, you know, without establishing the top of bank, you know, there is no way for me to direct them as far as how far out on the site they could go. And so, I gave them the contact with our, of our primary biologist that we use, Mike Wood. And he did a site visit and provided an email to me and to the pending property owner, paid him to do that. The, I did consult with Mike Wood as part of my review of this application to ensure that what they were proposing still complied with his recommended setback, which was 15 feet. Again, he was looking at it with a different frame when he initially gave his more complete analysis in looking at doing a modest addition. So, I didn't include his email in the staff report because it wasn't directly relevant, but the proposed setbacks of the applicant comply with what his direction was. And he was looking at it with, that the areas that, again, where they're looking at doing the construction is where they were, the previous property owner was looking at doing the additions, and that area is channelized. And so, with that in mind, he said potentially even down to 10 feet would be appropriate, but he wasn't necessarily saying that.
And another question, if I may, while you're at the microphone. We were discussing earlier the discrepancies that Ms. Ellis was pointing out in the report, and you were going through your notes while we were having that. Did you learn anything? Was that in fact the case?
I couldn't make that correlation. I didn't, I didn't analyze the reports with that in mind, but when I looked at it this evening, I couldn't connect that there was that kind of offset that directed those kinds of changes because there wasn't trees that were similarly sized, you know, like, say the number of the tree was off, and then that information would be relevant to a different tree. I didn't see it, but the point is, is that Debbie Ellis, her role is to correct misinformation or provide that information to begin with, and that is what she did.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Following up, did you have Mr. Woods, he was the other arborist you called to look at, who was it that came out to look at the top of the bank?
So, Mike Wood is the biologist that often does consulting work in the town.
Did he look at this with knowing that Deborah Ellis had suggested that they move the driveway away from the trees? And also, did he ever suggest layering another, I guess, a shrub layer in front of those trees to further protect that bank?
So, Mike Wood didn't directly look at this application. I compared what his previous analysis was and the setbacks that he was recommending based on his initial review. And he concurred that those were still relevant based on the concept. I think I sent him a site plan, but he didn't do a full-on review.
He didn't do, okay. And Deborah Ellis, when she reviews the trees on the property, did you know if she passed, I didn't see it in the report, but I'm going to follow up with you on this. Did she look at reviewing this with the idea of further protection of the top of the bank from the house by layering it with another layer of shrubs, natural native shrubs?
She didn't.
That's often done, by the way.
When she finds it relevant, she often does include information in regards to biological constraints, but that's not her specialty, so she doesn't.
Right, okay. So, was it that is my, is the answer?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
I was just curious, I had a question, following up on something Commissioner Kane said earlier. Can you confirm that there is or isn't any other three-car garages in that neighborhood? My sense was no, but, and I think his was as well, but, and maybe, maybe that wasn't part of your analysis, but.
As far as I'm aware of, there are no three-car garages in the immediate neighborhood. The immediate neighborhood is, we defined it as immediate area because it really isn't the same immediate neighborhood. But I think if you go beyond that, you may find one or two, but.
Well, because you guys actually did a pretty thorough extended neighborhood analysis. Normally, it's what, the five houses and the two, you know, it's not, this is a much bigger neighborhood analysis than we, than we're used to seeing.
And we didn't look at the number of garage bays like we would necessarily on another one where you're actually fronting on a street. So, we didn't, I didn't take that into direct correlation. We did look at the size, obviously, and compared those, but because it's not fronting directly onto a street where you're looking at having that direct visual comparison, it wasn't as relevant in our analysis, but doesn't mean it's not relevant to your discussion.
Right. And that was the thing, so, I mean, you know, at the end of the day, it kind of comes down to the total size. Another question I had was, are, probably not in this neighborhood, but because of the size of the houses, but have you, are there any other houses in this neighborhood analysis that we know would have five bedrooms? Because I think that's one of the questions I had was, you know, do you really have to go to almost 4,500 square feet to get five bedrooms? And I don't know that any of these houses in this neighborhood would, but it seemed like you could get there with a smaller number. So, if you knew that, I'd like to know.
Unfortunately, our information doesn't give us bedroom counts generally, at least not accurate. Sometimes the county information guesses at it, but I wouldn't rely on that number.
Okay.
Any further comments? Commissioner Erickson?
So, it seems to me that, I won't repeat many of Commissioner O'Donnell's comments, but I would have made many of the same comments. And it seems like to me that they, in designing the house for this particular lot, which is an unusual lot in the area, the roof treatment, the articulations, and the placement that they chose to, and the way they turned the garage and so forth, even though it's a three, even though it's a three-bay garage, it's turned so that the three bays don't even face if you come into the, into the property. So, they were careful in the, in the way they designed the home and were sensitive to it, and the fact that it isn't, that it is in fact a one-story home seems to me addressed in the way they did the roof treatments, the articulations, so forth, did address in a pretty reasonable manner and respectful manner to the town's guidelines about bulk, mass, and scale. When I was in the neighborhood, and I hope whomever the owners of the property I'm going to reference are, aren't offended by this, the property that's at 109 Sierra Marina wouldn't match, wouldn't pass the test for me of bulk, mass, and scale in the neighborhood, not just its FAR, but when you look at it on the property, it just wouldn't pass that test. So, I think they probably, for me, generally passed the test of the guidelines.
Any other comments? I will make one, and along with Commissioner Kane, I am hung up on the word "shall." The word "shall" is very important to me. So, when I see in the residential design guidelines, it talks about it being, that it shall be similar in mass, bulk, and scale to the immediate neighborhood. I'm not making that finding. I think it can be brought in a little closer to keep it in scale with the neighborhood. Commissioner Hanson?
I wanted to make a comment on that same thing. I do think that this is a very unusual lot, and, you know, if there's ever a situation where you might look at make, letting, allowing the biggest house in the neighborhood, I can see why, but I just think that this particular house is just too big. And I think I could support this, it being the biggest house if it was closer to the next biggest house in the neighborhood, which Commissioner Erickson just pointed out might be too big in bulk and mass and scale. So, we're looking at, you know, the next biggest house in this neighborhood, house and garage-wise is, is under 4,000 square feet. So, I mean, I think we're just not in the zone for where it needs to be to meet with the idea of the residential guideline "shall."
Commissioner Erickson?
So, just so that my comments about the other house are not taken out of context, that lot is 8,913 square foot. This one is 24,500 square feet. It has an FAR twice the size of the FAR of this house. So, my comment about that house had to do with its placement on the lot that it was in, in the context of it, much as my evaluation of this house would be in the context of its lot, in its placement on the lot.
Thank you. Commissioner Talisfor?
And I will probably just wrap up by saying that as far as the house size, you know, I'm looking at this, it's almost at 24 square feet, you know, there are some two-story homes that are at that. And although the site gives the illusion of a lot of space, I think what I'm seeing here is an almost 24-high home, height home that really covers the lot, covers a lot of the lot, of the buildable area. And I do think that it, for those reasons, I think that it, it gives, it will give the illusion of even more coverage. I think it needs to be brought down. And, you know, I don't know what that number is, but I think we should arrive at a number. I mean, I could, I just, it just, it should be brought down so that if we're, if, there's also a guideline that says to replace, replacement homes with about the same size replacement home. Now, I know that we don't want to always adhere to that because today's, in today's world, we do need, people are used to bigger homes, and they want bigger homes for various reasons. But on the other hand, I do think this needs to be brought down in square footage, and I, and I think it can be. There are many rooms that, they're lovely, and I'm sure, but I think it can be brought down without, without disappointing the design, and I think it will translate. So, I would suggest bringing it down. I don't know. More in keeping with the largest house in the neighborhood, yes?
Commissioner Kane?
You know, we're at a philosophical point once again.
Discretionary.
And I want to say again that I think I could support something because of the uniqueness of this lot, as has been pointed out, but not something that's 40% larger than the average or whatever that correct number is. So, we, what does scale back mean? And how are we going to find that in the form of a motion? I'd like to try one. Given that staff recommended denial in the first place, they may have an eye toward what they would recommend approval for. They've heard what we've said tonight, three-car garage, 4,400 square feet, five bedrooms with a study. That doesn't compare to anything in the neighborhood, and yet neither does the lot. It's quite unique. So, I'd like to try a motion. We've been given the option to continue the matter to a date certain with specific direction. And, you know, we've had trouble with this in the past, is everybody wants to give specific direction. So, I'm okay with that, too. If people want to add in concerns, I've expressed a concern on the driveway that subject to staff's approval, it either be moved over or decreased in width. The bushes could be put in, but I trust staff's judgment on that. We know what's at stake is the trees along, along that portion of the driveway. I've expressed my concern about the three-car garage. I've expressed my concern about 4,500 square feet being 30, 40% larger. It's not the largest house in the neighborhood, it's the largest house in town, you know, I'm making that up. But it is substantially larger than anything in that neighborhood. Where we need to meet on Commissioner O'Donnell's discretion, I don't know. But I, I know it's closer to the next largest house in the neighborhood than this one is. Is that a motion?
Yes, I was just going to ask you, is that a motion, Commissioner Kane?
I don't think Commissioner O'Donnell will approve that motion.
I don't think so, but do we have a second, Commissioner Talisfor?
Second that, if you could.
That was a motion.
Can you capture that motion? I mean, I'd like to second something, but it wasn't a motion.
Was it to move to a date certain?
What I said was, we've had difficulty giving guidance in the past. I don't want to design from up here.
Do you want to make a motion to continue it to a date certain?
Yes. And then it says, "with specific direction." And if we wanted to chime in on that.
And then you could do the directions.
Oh, you're so good. I would, I would make a motion to continue this matter to a date certain.
Commissioner Talisfor?
I'll second that motion.
No, I'm good.
You're good with that?
Discussion. The chair's running the show.
All right. So, I can call the question in advance of.
Do some of them have directions?
Okay, can you clarify the directions from?
I think, I think we have to give direction. We haven't given any direction yet.
Commissioner Kane did give some direction, right?
And staff took notes. I appreciate.
And what was it? So, I can know what I'm seconding.
Does anybody else have further direction to add to Commissioner Kane's motion? Commissioner Talisfor?
Yes, could the secundar ask for a reading of the notes that the staff took on Commissioner Kane's motion and direction?
Well, on his motion, there wasn't any direction, but from his prior direction, what I captured was that it was to reduce the size of the house to be more in keeping with the neighborhood, but that there may be some consideration that it, given the lot, the lot size, that it may be able to be larger than the largest neighbor in the neighborhood, that they look at either reducing the driveway width or relocating the driveway to help protect the trees, that there's concerns about the three-car garage, and that the applicant could consider some riparian, additional riparian planting on their property. And I can't remember if there's any other ones. So, those are the ones that we captured.
Is there a debate on the trees? Is there something we should do for the eucalyptus or let it go?
Well, you can definitely provide that direction if you have a preference that the eucalyptus stay.
Well, I look to the commission. Do we have a concern about that?
Commissioner Talisfor, do you have a concern with the tree?
You know, I don't. I know that eucalyptuses have question marks with them. I'm going to, you know, would, I think.
Commissioner Talisfor, do you have a concern with the tree?
You know, I don't. I know that eucalyptuses have question marks with them. I'm going to, you know, I think we'll just take what the, our town arborist had suggested.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, I would support this motion because I think reduction in this, this structure will pull back some of it, I'm hoping, from the top of the bank of that stream, because even though it's mostly a cemented area section, that is still a channel that ducks inhabit, as I saw when I was out there. Birds are there, it's probably frogs, salamanders, and I do think that needs that extra protection. And I am happy that you said to please layer it with the shrub that I, like I had suggested it. So that is one of the reasons I'll... And I, do you want a number for reduction? Do you, what is, I don't know if we should do that or not, but more in keeping, I'm hoping that it's more in keeping with the largest house, but, you know, somewhere between, I would say, 5 or 750 square feet reduction? That's just a...
I would say closer to the largest house in the neighborhood, and then we can use discretion because of the, because of the nature of the property.
Okay. I'll go with that. Thank you.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. I will call the question. Commissioner Erickson, did you want to add a comment? I see...
And if we could add to the motion, the date certain, which I believe we're looking at the January 27th.
I would just look for a nod from the applicant's architect that whether or not he thinks he's been able to pull any of, all of that information together, probably three weeks prior to that, so the beginning of January.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jeans, the public hearing is closed.
I don't believe that number was in, I don't believe that number was captured in the motion. Correct?
It was not.
No, it was not. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner O'Donnell?
So we have a motion in a second, and in a moment, we're going to vote. Let me just throw out one other suggestion, and I'm not going to support this, but it will pass. But one thing that would like us to consider, since we have heard that this may be an idle act, if in fact the applicant is not going to do it, then we're going to kill three weeks or a month, or whatever it is. And therefore, it does seem to me that if the applicant wants to go to the council and see what the council is going to do, you know, I don't have a problem with that. And so all I would ask is, is the maker, well, when we discuss voting on this, we can either say, no, that's what we're going to do, we're going to continue it, and three or four weeks from now, we're going to sit there and they're going to say, I didn't reduce it, or we can deny the, deny the application and let the appeal go forward. I'd just throw that out so before we vote, we'll at least know that there is another option.
I'm going to look to the community development director, Ms. Pravetti. Has her hand up for us?
I would just say that your town council really respects the good work that you do here as our commission, and I would say that if it is the preference that you believe there is more work for this application, that they will be able to make a better decision if you've been able to do, give it your best shot to make it the best project that it can be.
Might I just say that if we had more work to do, I would agree with you, but if it's an applicant who just told us he won't do it, then I think the council would probably decide that if he won't do it, he won't do it, so...
Commissioner Kane?
I respectfully decline to be led by the applicant, and I'll stay with the motion that I made.
All right. All right, then I will call the question. Commissioner Erickson, you have your hand up.
So in Commissioner Talisfor's comments earlier, she expressed a concern about lot coverage of the buildable area of the house, so I didn't know if that was, if that was another concern that the secondor of the motion wanted added to it, added to a concern, and then I would want to be sure the staff could provide some helpful information to the applicant about what appropriate lot coverage is. I'm not suggesting it should be added, I just didn't want something to be left out or, and anyway, that was...
Thank you for that, Commissioner Erickson.
Yes, thank you.
All right, we are back to calling the question. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Commissioner Erickson and Commissioner O'Donnell opposed. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights of the actions of the commission on this item?
There are not. It was a continued item, so there are no appeal rights.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Pravetti. Thank you, Ms. Mosley. We do have a date certain?
January 27th.
There is no meeting later this month.
Thank you. Ms. Pravetti, do you have a report for the commission?
There's no report, thank you.
All right. I have a commission matter. This is our last hearing for 2015. We're closing it out. So we would like to thank staff for their outstanding guidance and support throughout the year. The professionalism has been exemplary. Thank you. And thank you, commissioners, for giving the precious gift of time throughout the year and during the holiday season. If no further commission matters, the meeting's adjourned.